March 14th, 2019, Town of Northwood Planning Board meeting to order at 6:42. Present: Hal Kreider, Terrence Crowe, Lee Baldwin, Bob Skorbo, Town staff. Voting designation, all members present. We have minutes of February 28th to go over. And I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second? Sorry. Page two. Motion by Mr. Kreider, second by Ms. Baldwin. Discussion on page three, line 11. I'd like to say, change that to Terrence Crowe will open public comment. And we can delete a couple lines on page four and lines eight, nine, and 10.
Oh, sorry. Must have been interrupted there.
I figured that's exactly what happened.
Somebody asked me, I would just repeat.
That's not a problem. Anything else? Okay. I would...okay with the motion and second to one minutes as amended?
Yes.
Getting a head shake from this second, so further, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of the minutes as amended, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Those abstaining?
Abstain.
Abstain?
I wasn't here.
That doesn't necessarily mean you have to abstain.
Maybe the minutes aren't really what I thought.
She just doesn't want anything to do with it.
Nothing to do with it.
That's fine. You have to give a reason to abstain. That's certainly a valid one, so 3-0-1. Just because it's your, potentially your last meeting doesn't mean...
No, I wasn't here though, I wasn't here.
It's giving you a hard time.
I was in sunny South Carolina.
Oh, don't tell us where you were. Okay. We have a new case, 19-2. Okay.
The record show Linda's leaving the table. Linda's a direct abboter.
Oh.
She's got a better reason to use herself than I do.
The tape is rolling.
I know.
Good speed.
My staff report should be making its way around. You'll note as you go through your packets that the applicant did not check off all of the items on the checklist, so I will be taking a much more careful second pass through, but I wanted to make sure that you all had something in front of you tonight.
Okay.
This is filed as a minor site plan, even though they are only proposing interior renovations, because the site plan regs state that a change of use to multifamily defined as three or more residential units is a minor site plan. So they're requesting a lot of waivers like we've seen on other applications that just miss out on minimal impact status to effectively downgrade to submitting the same materials.
So no exterior changes whatsoever are minimal?
No, the applicant has indicated they're only intending interior changes.
And...
I believe they will need to improve the septic system, but they are proposing to do that as a condition of approval.
Yeah, get something from the state to indicate.
Right.
Because downstairs was the dentist office, and there was a bathroom, a little kitchen, but I'm assuming there was like a half bathroom.
Keep in mind...
Sorry.
10,000-foot...
Yeah.
Oh, that's just...
So, related question, what is our definition of a multifamily? Is it three units within the same building?
I believe...
It would be three units on the same property, but most things, you're not allowed to have more than one building on the property that has a unit in it. So, in fact, it tends to be three units in one building.
How is, how is that different than the proposed, well, actually, we approved it on, behind the hardware store there, where there was 12 acres, they were going to conserve 10 and put five units, which looked, if I recollect, five units right next to each...
Yeah, they're attached.
They filed a minor site plan.
Yeah, so those are attached. Are those considered multifamily?
Yes.
Yes.
Ah, okay. Thank you.
I don't think we have a definition of structure type for multifamily. As you said, it's multiple families on...
It refers to the number of units on one property.
Yeah.
So even if somebody were to come in with an elderly housing proposal where they are allowed to cluster multiple buildings on one parcel, I think that would still, I mean, it would sort of be classified as elderly housing instead because it has its own definition, but that would be sort of under the umbrella of multifamily as well.
The way I've always interpreted it as well.
So then, how does the lot dimensions and lot size and those types of calculations figure in for a multifamily? Do we have a separate equation for that?
I believe there are side setback increases from 20 feet to 50.
Yep.
But also, are there, are there, what do you call it? A minimum number of acres required and stuff like that?
I'll double-check the residential density calculation. Like I said, this was a first pass to make sure that you had something in front of you, but I was swamped this week.
Yeah, I'm just asking because I...
I'll email you an update.
I recollect on something else, you did some kind of calculation and...
There is a residential density calculation, and...
Oh, it was down...
Actually, is that what they're going to CBA for? Residential density? No, they're going to CBA for frontage.
For the lot size.
It is for lot size?
Well, then that would, that would say that they're wondering about the...okay, because I just happened to see 4.9 or something.
Okay.
I forgot the notice post. But it's been posted for this, for the 28th, 26th. I'll go.
And they're, they will be at CBA that Monday.
Right. That's what I'm saying.
So then we'll know what the answer is.
The notice has been posted.
Yes. Okay, yeah.
For, and I recall it was for lot size, but...
Okay, so then we'll see what result is and go from there. Okay. So that's maybe why it's not a consideration at this point, because they don't know what the zoning board is going to say.
Right, the zoning code, that's not our purview. There is a recommended condition subsequent on the back. The septic.
Yeah. Okay. But, James, you listed it as an updated septic plan as opposed to confirmation that the septic system is sufficient, which is...
My understanding is that the septic system is currently in failure, and that the applicant intends to provide a new plan, but because currently they're just in contract and the sale may or may not go through if permissions aren't granted, they don't want to have to prepare the plan for something they may not commit to if we deny them.
So, related question for outside changes. Is there a reason we think that the parking and space like that won't change when it goes from one to two, three families?
Well, if it's, if it was commercial for one, one unit, two residential, the, I would make the assumption based on...
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, you're saying it's going from...
It's going from two residential and one commercial to three residential.
Oh, I missed that, that's on.
That's okay. So I would make the assumption that the...
Yeah.
This parking was for upstairs.
This parking was for...
Down.
The applicant has indicated that there will be no external changes, but that all of that would be in your purview to ask follow-up questions.
Yeah, okay. Well, that makes sense. I mean, I just didn't quite understand the situation.
Yeah, that's right. It's always good to ask.
Is, is the barn plan to be used as part of the housing, or...
10,000-foot view.
Yes, I'm just not familiar with what they have there now, so...
Yeah, no. Uh, well, you know where it is?
Yeah.
Okay. You can easily, you can drive by and see access from both Route 4 and Old Turnpike, provided the road's not flooded.
Well, it shouldn't be flooded there for the barn.
The barn is just storage.
Oh, oh, it's powered by Linda, so yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
This is off of Route 4, this part.
Yeah.
And it's a long driveway.
Yeah.
There's a house over here.
Yeah.
Yeah, but he's saying, Old Turnpike Road might be flooded at that point, or getting to it.
Yeah. We just dealt with that.
But I looked into that. That's because the covert that runs under Route 4 is too small, and it's owned by the state. I've already... Was it just talked about? Thanks.
So does the driveway go through a different lot?
I look into things too, you know.
The driveway ends up on Route 4.
But I see a lot line that goes...
Yes.
So it goes through somebody else's lot to get there?
The way I understand it happened was that the...
Like just a year or two ago.
Route 4 access was for the commercial side, and the residential side was for, off Route, off Old Turnpike. I'm not far from this. Okay, any questions?
No.
Anything else? Any information that is missing that you'd want to see from the applicant beforehand, before we hear it?
I guess given that nothing's really changing outside, you know, I don't know that really anything on the waivers, I shouldn't discuss it that way.
Correct, thank you.
But it looks like there's sufficient information based on what we got, given that no lot's changing.
Good job, James.
Okay.
Yeah, good, James.
We'll see that in two weeks. Well, I guess my, I was expecting, thinking it's like it's going to be another interesting meeting on the 28th because we had the 4:30 meeting, but we don't. We don't have the hazard mitigation meeting right before this, so...
We will not.
We will not, which is good.
While that's going around, I do have extra materials from the hazard mitigation meeting that was before this, if anybody is interested to take a look, take a copy. We are planning for our next meeting to be April 11th, also at 4:30 in this room. That is prior to next month's workshop. All are welcome to attend, it's open to the public. At that meeting, we will dig into the description of the hazards themselves and how each has impacted the town. So what I've sent around now is, this is all language out of our current ordinance for home businesses in home occupancies. So I don't have any proposed changes yet, I just wanted to show you sort of what I see as some of the issues, so we can talk about what you might like to see as a potential I started with the definition of a service business. As I mentioned, the case that sort of brought this to our attention was a discussion about whether something that meets the definition of service business also qualifies as a home business that requires a home business permit. And historically, it seems the town has said that, no, if you meet that definition, you don't need a permit. That it's small enough, you're a consultant or something, that you may as well just be using a computer in a room in your house and then going out for meetings, there's no difference to playing video games on a computer in your house and then commuting to work. I think that the definition as written could apply to home businesses or home occupations or something that would need a site plan. And I think I would prefer, I don't have any problems with there being some classification of things that don't need permissions, but I don't think that just meeting the definition of service business as it exists right now qualifies you for that. So I'd prefer to have a little bit more in the ordinance about those steps for how you would qualify for that. Then I also noted in the first two sections of the home business ordinance, essentially the way things are today, there are four different classes of home business slash occupation. And I don't think that was quite what we originally intended when we made these changes. I think we were thinking of class one is the sort of home office that doesn't need any sort of formal process, and class two is a home business that falls under this section. But the result, the way we have it, is that there are things that don't need any permission whatsoever and that aren't defined. And then we have three different classes of home business that need a variance and site plan approval, only need site plan approval, or that I can prove administratively without site plan approval.
I remember when we worked on this.
It was...
We thought we had it all figured out.
Yeah, well... We had good intentions. The road's paved, we're...
The road in Massachusetts is paved with good intentions.
Oh, okay. Good way of putting it that way.
Okay. I think we just need to do some work on this.
I guess so. From a, from the perspective of direction, though... You know, I was just speaking for myself, I think that was the intent, is that we have your two classes, home business, no impact, nothing, nothing external, no sale of property or no sale of goods kind of thing, and then we have the other stuff.
Right.
So, I mean, I guess I'd like consensus for the board, or at least if you need direction, that we're still in agreement that that was, should be the intent, but we need to work the language out.
If I...
Or, James needs to work the language out to give credit where credit is due.
If I remember, we, I agree, if my memory is correct, because we talked a lot about trying to simplify things for folks, trying to make it where they could, if it can't be one-stop shopping, at least, you know, they get everything they know and know how to resolve them within one stop. And I think that's still the intent, and if we're not there, we need to adjust it to get us there, so...
So I think if we're looking at classes one through four as they exist today, it sounds like we would still like class one to exist, that there will be things that don't need permissions from us, or that at the very least maybe just need to notify us of what they're doing.
Right.
And have confirmation that, yes, you do fall into this permit by notification, or, you know, just check in and, yes, you have zoning clearance to do what you want to do. So I think, I would suggest that that class be some sort of restored home occupancy definition. I think that not defining what that class is makes it a little bit too much of a gray
Yeah, the way you described it, I thought was pretty clear, it's when you get to some of these exceptions that really causes you to think. But I think, you know, keeping it simple is obviously, in my mind, a good thing, but I think also, if something's going to change, let's call it, quote, significantly, for your neighbor, if you do something, I think they should at least have a chance of, you know, going through the process. So we need to protect the neighbors from that situation where they either don't know what's going on or what's changing, and then, you know, they're surprised and nobody likes So, it sounds like you have a good sense of what we're looking for.
So then, I think classes two through four would be where I would be looking for a little bit of guidance, where currently we have things that I can do in consultation with the building inspector if they meet all criteria. There are things that if they don't meet those, they have to get a home business site plan from you, and there are things that require variances on top of it. And I think that having three of those categories is a little bit confusing. And I think they should probably, at the very least, be restructured to make that more clear, if there are things you do want a variance for.
Well, is there...
What...
I'm sorry, Bob, go ahead.
Well, because I don't have my code in front of me, what do we require a variance for, for the home business?
It's right in front of you. If the use does, if the use does generate such traffic...
It's just traffic.
It's not a permitted, permitted use, the only thing.
And that's, and, okay, so...
But that's...
Why would they have to get a variance? Because it's in our code, it's because it doesn't meet...
Because of that sentence.
It doesn't meet our definition of home business if they generate additional traffic. And home business is no longer permitted use, so they have to get a variance.
The thing that I really dislike about this first paragraph is that it says essentially nothing about what we intend to be home businesses.
Right.
The first three quarters of that section is talking about home offices that generate less of an impact than a home business, but then it does say, but then it says, if you do generate an impact that might be ascribed to a home business, you need to get a variance.
Right, right.
But then the home business section doesn't say you need a variance for anything.
That's, well, that's why I always tried to figure out why we would have a variance.
I would prefer to, essentially pull that entire paragraph out of the home business section and turn it into a home occupation section that would live right alongside it and have its own defined term, but also drop that variance mention and maybe just be a little bit more explicit about what criteria they need to meet, because if they don't meet any of those criteria that are necessary, they have, the default is they have to get a variance for anything in the zoning ordinance. So there may always, we probably can't come up with an ordinance that is both simple and thinks of all situations.
Right.
So instead of outlining, if you want to do this, you need a variance, if you want to do this, you need a variance, if you want to do this, you need a variance, just say, a home occupation is things that do X, Y, and Z and don't do A, B, and C. A home business is things that do X, Y, Z, A, B, and C, but don't have D, E, or F. And anybody that wants to do D, E, or F on their property has to get a variance.
The only reason we have, we require, or the intent for requiring the variances because this is a primary, primary use of the land as residence.
I should say, we'd either need to get a variance to have on something with a residential structure as a principle, or we'd need to file a commercial site plan.
That's what I was trying to get at initially. Does that make sense? Do you understand why? Okay, just double-check.
One of the other options that I thought about, and I'm not sure if this would make it easier or harder to understand on the user end, would be to define a home business in the zoning circumstances under which it's allowed, but leave the distinction between what I can approve administratively and what requires a site plan to the site plan regs.
So that's sort of what I was thinking, was, noting that this was in definitions, if we are...
I think there would still need to be some zoning criteria about where they're allowed and under what conditions. But I think as far, it could be simpler in the zoning ordinance to just say you are either a home occupation or a home business, or a business requiring a full commercial site plan, and in the site plan regs differentiate between site plan approval administratively and site plan approval by the board.
We use the same model at my day job, where the policies that affect so many different aspects of schools are fairly vague in some circumstances, or they push the, they define it and then say something in the effect of, see the administrative processes for complete details, or whatever, however you want to do. The difference is that, and the parallel is in this case, the school board has to adopt the poli, define and adopt the policy. The administrative processes can be changed as we find circumstances needed by internal vote of whatever subcommittee there is, so it's, they're a lot easier to modify as circumstances apply. I think that's James's intent, which I completely agree with, is let's do definitions, you are a home business, this is where it's allowed, whatever, home occupation, and then push it off in the site plan, because then we can say, yeah, it's a lot easier to get a waiver than it is to get a variance. Is that some, was that correct in your interpretation? That would be my preference, but I'm just one person.
I think that sounds good, Bob, because again, people want the process to be fair, they want it to be understandable, and they don't want it to take forever.
Right.
And I think that would satisfy those concerns.
Even though...
Another concern that I had, that I thought was weird before, but didn't think of a way to articulate until just now, this section gives me the permanent authority, not normal zoning administrator who is the code enforcement and building inspector.
Right.
And I think from a legal standpoint, typically whoever is the zoning administrator, which is normally the building inspector in most communities, is the only person able to give an official definition of a zoning ordinance. And in discussing a zoning ordinance that an applicant was sort of challenging me on, I had that... I had that philosophical question about whether I had the authority to even have that conversation. In that case, I err it on the side of I do because it granted me permitting authority in the zoning ordinance, so I have the authority to interpret just this section. But I would feel more comfortable if I was granted the authority to interpret the site plan regulations. Rather than have that potential conflict of jurisdiction in the zoning ordinance.
Okay. I see your point.
And whatever section or whatever I come back with and have a direct cross-reference to, site plan will be applicable as indicated in site plan regulations section, whatever.
Do we, again, not looking, not having it in front of me, we have a minimal impact site plan?
We also have a home business site plan.
We do have a home business site plan, okay.
That I have never had to use. I think it's roughly on a par with what you would expect from a minimal impact.
I think that's, I won't say the challenge, but the one aspect of if we reduce the, if we go with plan of zoning, defining it in zoning without the pro, without the variance and all the processes, is I think it sounds like the board wants to do, we need to make sure that site plan will work for that definition. And I'm, I'm okay with what we have now, but I definitely, I do want to take a look at it again to make sure that we don't, we might want to modify site plan based on these definition changes, but...
We haven't looked at site plan or subdivision regs at all since I've been here. And I think probably for a couple of years prior to that. So it may be coming time to do a pass at those.
The reason we had not done that is because we were advised that we needed to do the master plan update before we do subdivision and site plan regulations reviews, which is what I wanted to do.
Ideal.
It would be ideal, but the impression I, empirically, there's not a significant difference between our 2004 site plan or master plan and our 2014, 19 site master plan in terms of attitude. I think growth is the biggest difference and an emphasis, more emphasis on agriculture and senior impacts. But in terms of, of where we, the interest of the 2004, the 2014 through 18, in terms of housing development and where this, what the master, the planning board is doing, there are not significant differences.
So let's do this then. I will, um, come back with some kind of proposal for the April workshop.
You're gonna have time to sleep?
That's why I'm suggesting the April workshop and not the meeting in two weeks. I have copies of other communities' regulations that I can take a look at. I know Barrington has a pretty clear home occupation, home business split. I think a lot of communities are more restrictive or at least require more of their applicants. Or in the case of the home occupation that we talked about, non-applicants, I think they require them all to be applicants.
As opposed to permit by notification?
Technically, what we have right now isn't even permit by notification. It's just sort of if they don't notify us, whatever, I don't know. Like it, it is that, it feels that informal, um, that we don't, I think there are communities that say, for example, for a home occupation, you need to notify the town, maybe get your rubber stamp letter that yes, you can operate and you need to follow up every year to notify the town that you're still operating. So that they can track where there are those home occupations. We don't have that.
No.
So there, there are some things that I could see potentially borrowing from to at least make sure that we're getting people in the door so that we know about things or could do things officially. There are some things that I probably wouldn't advocate for. A consulting business that's a home occupation, if we structured it to say that home occupations could not take up more than thirty percent of the home or something of that nature, I wouldn't think that we would need to limit them in number. For example, if there were two people in the same household who were both consultants.
I seem to recall we had that same kind of thing. It was no more than twenty-five percent of the, the growth, the net floor area were home.
We have that for the home business currently. I don't recall, I've only looked at the prior home occupation definition once or twice.
It's been a while.
But I do have it and I can look back at it. So when I come back in April, I can do a little bit more of side by side. This is what we had, this is what we have, here's some stuff from other communities, and here's what I propose.
Yeah, let's make sure when we do it, we lay, lay it out so we have all the pieces you can look at them sort of side by side as we're doing it. Because I, I'm having a little trouble following some of the different ones and stuff. And like you say, it's a little complicated. If we simplify it, I think it'd be a better...
And I can try and make sure to email that out with enough time that you can all go up through the workshop.
One of the things, once that we should as a board figure is what is the purpose of, well, and I'll just blatantly say it, this being the live free or die state, how much regulation do we want our residents and business owners to go through for a home occupation?
We hear so much that, you know, everyone's always saying how we are so restrictive. I would hate to put so much more restriction on that people aren't going to want to do that.
Well, and I think there's the...
Or they'll just do it, we won't even know about it.
Right. There is the, I mean, we, we, the doubt Northwood got into, I won't say trouble, but there was the, a slate of unofficial apartments. That occurred, which caused problems, risk. Fire department doesn't know they're there. Or don't know there's an extra person in the building, how many extra people are there, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. It was, I won't go so far as to say it was common knowledge, but, uh, there was public knowledge of, of multi unapproved apartments, but it was also a matter of then how much does this town want to crack down on them?
Right.
I think we've taken care of that fairly well. I don't know, that would be building inspector, and that's not appropriate to talk about tonight. In this case, if...
People think there's a mountain of paperwork, they're not going to want to come.
Right, if we had a...
It's gotta be simple.
Right, well...
It could be a dog rumor, you're gonna have one person, you know, every three days. I don't want it to be this huge ordeal.
I mean, I moonlight on occasion.
There you go. Did you know about that?
Right. It's a service, I don't do anything.
Right, I don't want to be more paperwork, and so, so much so that it's cumbersome and people don't want to come tell us, they don't want to try to, to do a business.
Well, I understand even, it has to be simple enough that they don't need somebody to interpret it for them.
Oh, come to a meeting, come to a meeting, come to a meeting, it's like, right.
Right. But, and that's how, I think we all are talking the same thing, pardon me, of the service business, the home occupation, yes, if I run something out of my home, I'm at home forty hours a week, working out of my office or however, a significant portion thereof, that's one thing. Because now I'm home. And my house is occupied during typical non-office hours. That's one, I can call, you know, something happens, the town, I would like the town to know, yeah, sure, that's the case. If it's a home occupation or home service business, I'm not there at nine to five. Don't care. As long as, as I meet the criteria that we develop, the town, fine, you can know that I'm there, but it doesn't impact much. We don't want, if I do it on occasion, you know, ten hours a year or a couple of weeks a year...
I, I think that the balance is where it starts affecting the neighbors. Like I say, nobody likes that surprise.
That a dozen cars coming every day, you know?
Sure. But then keep in mind that if we do have notification by permit or whatever the mechanism is, that's either certified mail at six bucks a pop to all your butters.
You know, at some point you have to say, what's fair is fair and you're just, that's part of the cost of doing business.
I don't disagree with you.
So I think you just gotta...
But if I, if I wanna, if I'm gonna make five hundred bucks on a weekend because I do a DJ show as a service business and it's not impacting anybody, I'm not gonna spend...
Right, right, you're probably CDs.
Put that up to James to help sort out. I think you've given him enough time.
I, I was thinking notification at the town, not necessarily the butters. And I know that there are things in state statute that vary depending upon whether the butter is in agreement or not, but I think, I have some professional concerns about that. About whether somebody not liking an approval can change what the regulation of that permit is.
And I, but I think the point is well taken is that, you know, there's no exterior impacts, you know, aside from normal residential operations.
I think that's one of the guiding principles. As soon as you start affecting the neighborhood or how things change, then at least it's got to be some consideration.
I mean, you're talking possibly a sign of four square feet, that's...
Yeah, I mean, you know, something like that.
Not very big, I mean.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think we can come up with something that's reasonable and not so onerous that people can't grasp it.
Yeah.
I shouldn't say that. I think James can give us a draft.
I know James can do that in April.
After the tax season.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else tonight? No signatures? June first is the OEP Planning a Zoning Conference. I don't think they've done anything more than reserve the date. But if you have not, if you intend to continue with zoning board, it's, the town pays for it. It's always excellent food and usually some very good information. If you've not attended before. Okay, anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Discussion, anybody not in favor? We're adjourned by seven twenty-eight.